That was the voice I was looking for. Thank you.
And this meeting is being recorded. All right. Supervisor Rosar, I'd ask you to please come forward for the invocation. I would ask the body to rise and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. It is that.
Yeah. Thank you, Owen. So I was disappointed to see that calendars on September the 17th did not acknowledge that it was Constitution Day. I think a lot of you know that. I grew up in Orange County, Virginia, which was the home of the father of our Constitution, James Madison. And it really disappointed me that our calendars did not acknowledge our wonderful document of the Constitution on our calendars. So I just would like to remind you that September the 17th was Constitution Day. There were a lot of events across our state, and I'm glad that people acknowledged that as the Constitution Day. So if you would so desire, please join me in prayer. Our Father who is in heaven, holy is your name. Thank you for this beautiful September day and for the opportunity to serve you in this place. May we never take for granted the responsibility of representing those who elected or employed us, recognizing we will be held responsible for the way we manage this opportunity. Thank you for the safe travels that we've had. We pray for our law enforcement personnel, those who serve in the military, emergency service personnel, and the family members who support them all. Help them to realize how much they are appreciated. And now go with us as we conduct the people's business. Give us wisdom, guidance, and direction as we discuss issues with significant fiscal implications to the taxpayers of our municipalities. Go with us through this day. Help us to be forever grateful for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. May God bless Wood County, the state of Wisconsin, and America as we honor you and seek your help in all things. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. First order of business today is acceptance of the minutes as published. A motion is at Hamilton, second by LaFontaine. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. As I mentioned earlier, excusals today, we have Supervisor Bry, who's out of town attending some issues. Resignations, we have none today. We have no appointments or reappointments. It brings us to public comment. And I see I have a number of people in the back of the room. Do I have any public comment today? Any public comment? If we do, we'd ask you to approach the microphone, state your name. Any business? Okay. Apparently, I see none. We've got a special order of business today from the ADRC of Central Wisconsin. We've also got a presentation on the jail project bids, which was on the agenda after we were voting on some of these resolutions that pertain to that. So the first thing we're going to do is bring forth, with your indulgence, please, with your permission, the presentation of the jail project bids and where we are in that process. Does anybody have any problem with that presentation? I was hoping not, because I think it makes more sense to listen to it before we vote for it than after. Laura, do you want to take it from here?
Sure. Yes, Kurt, would you mind, please, coming forward and giving us your update on our
Morning, everyone. I think most of you board members could have, we've got a copy of this to you, stack a lumber. Most of you probably were here for the ad hoc committee to kind of review it, and I'm just going to give you a brief summary. Again, look to the bottom of the page, and you'll see that the number is much larger than we had anticipated. We did have decent bid coverage throughout the bid categories. We had many bids in our MEP portion, which is a good section of our bids. We did have a couple categories that we did receive no bids on. One was in 06 Woods Plastics and Composites and then 9E Flooring. We carried an allowance for what the budget amount should be for those categories, and those will be rebid here in the future. Some of the big summaries in regards to the overall value or the allowances that we carry, down below, you can see we carry an allowance for FFNE, which is fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. Contingency of 10% we're carrying. Due to the nature of your project, there are some potential unforeseen conditions, so we're carrying slightly higher contingency than what we would typically do. Typically, that's 3% to 5%, but we're proposing a 10% contingency for your project. And the same thing with our general conditions line item, which is just above that subtotal hard cost. We've extended the general conditions or the duration of the project due to manpower and supply issues. And again, those are allowances. If the project is done sooner, that number will be reduced. So the areas that we saw some busts in the number, the number three package, we have about a $3 to $4 million bust on category number three. The roofing was over about a quarter of a million dollars. Laundry and food service equipment was about $300,000. Plumbing was just over $400,000. Electrical was $2 million. And then, obviously, the general conditions that we extended were there in an increase in that allowance. So what I had told the ad hoc committee is that we're not at a point here to make recommendations of this entire list. We need to still vet the process and propose that we'll work with these low contractors to find some value engineering options, to come back with some savings. But those savings that I would anticipate aren't going to be significant to drop this back down into the budget that was originally anticipated or some increases that we had thought we would see. So like I shared with the committee, I was expecting a number that was going to be in that $78 million range, and then we'd have contingency on top of that. I was surprised with the increases that are there, but it's really market-driven in regards to what we're seeing from the cost perspective. We did, like I say, we did have fair bid coverage. The other thing I look at in those bid summaries is when those bids are pretty consistent, and you'll see that when you look at the tabulation. There wasn't a lot of spread between many of them. There's always a high and a low. But on an average, they were all competitively bid, which gives me some comfort that we have the accurate numbers that are there. So what we proposed with the ad hoc committee is that we would come back to them in about a week with some of these value engineering options for them to take action on if we want to revise scope. But also, in that meeting, they talked about authorization for the facilities director to award some of these contracts to move forward. What I told the committee is that we've got 45 days that you have to act on this, but the sooner that we can make some decisions to get started, the better. That's going to have with cost. And I know there's going to be some discussion here about financing and options that are there, but are there any questions specific to the summary that's before you here or comments?
Donna, go ahead. And Kurt, we're going to keep you up here, too, because we're going to bring you back here as we get to that. But Donna, go ahead. Supervisor Rosar.
So I don't know when the appropriate time is to ask this question, but I have heard in the construction world that some people are going to a cost plus 5%, and what they're doing is showing the invoices and everything, and then they're adding 5%. Is that something you've heard about? Somebody's not muted. Is that something that you've heard about, and is that a viable option for this project?
Well, it is a different delivery method in regards to how the construction management approach is taken. And the model that you're talking about is that a construction manager would come in, obviously directing people in the project, and then they would then have that 5% fee. You've got a very similar model in regards to this scenario. Okay? Everything is competitively bid. So when you talk about identifying all those costs, everything in this project has been competitively bid in all those categories. And when we get into those FFNE items, all of those will be competitively bid. So you have the same model. To say that it's going to change what your pricing model would be, that wouldn't change your pricing component. Everything is still open book here. Everything is competitively bid, and I'm not familiar if all of you are familiar with how we did the process. So there was a bid document set that was put in place, plans and specifications. It was put out to plan holders. Many contractors were able to pull those. And then we had a pre-bid. We had a bid opening, and obviously, we're here today. So it was a similar model, just contracted a little bit differently. So any questions?
Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I noticed when I saw this presentation in the jail ad hoc committee meeting, you just mentioned it again, you mentioned the FFNE amount of $2.5 million. That's furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Is that anticipating newer furniture for the sheriff's department in there?
Yes, correct.
It is.
Correct.
So could we say, is that an area where we might focus, make some savings?
Sure. We can go through and identify what could be reused. Right now, it's just a placeholder if we would put all new in that sheriff's office. Correct.
Thank you. Do we have other things? We don't say you had your time to do your value engineering.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
There'll certainly be some additional conversation. I wanted to just get Kurt up right away to give you a little heads up on where we're going to go with some of these. And Kurt, if I don't have any other questions, I'm going to probably keep you up here, because we're going to roll through a couple of quick things here in the Operations Committee, and then we'll get to you, Laura, okay? All right. So I'm going to go back to your packet real quick. On page six, you had referrals. There were six of them. Went to the appropriate committees. We have the page seven through nine is the Operations Committee meeting minutes from September 6th. Supervisor Clendenning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know when is the proper time to ask this question, but, you know, the Operations Committee going through the budgets, I hear all kinds of things about we're going to pay our employees, 2%, 2.5%, some others 4%. It's a shame that the only time the county board gets a chance to vote on this is when they present it at the county board budget, asking whether or not. Just to let you know, I've been talking to other people about this, and I personally hear that we're going to pay our employees a 2% increase, and I think that's utterly ridiculous. And I would like to know when the county board is going to give that number of, like we're going to pay our employees. Because I tell you, I'm not voting out of contract that, I don't, a budget that only gives 2% to our employees after all that has been going on.
Supervisor Wagner. Now, may you explain the process?
We based our recommendations and we put out the guidance to the departments based on the best estimates of what our revenues would be and also trying to keep the overall budget within the scope of about a 2.5% increase. Mr. Clendenning is welcome to sit in on the meetings and the discussions anytime he wants. We're happy to have him.
And can you touch on the step increases in relation to also the?
Yeah, I would, I thought that might go without saying, but apparently not. The 2%, we said 2% plus stiff increases. And the stiff increases for everybody below the median, it's about 2.5%. Above that, it ranges anywhere from 1.5% to 1% for everything above that. So you add that on to the 2.5% adjustment, or excuse me, 2% adjustment to the entire pay scale, and it comes out sometimes 4.5%, sometimes 3, sometimes 3.5%, depending on where the employee is within the scale. Is that the?
Yeah, exactly. And we will be further discussing this as we move through the process.
We're discussing this in operations, and we will be all, hopefully, we'll be looking at and monitoring our, based on the budget requests, we'll be looking at the initial guidance as to whether it will still remain at 2% or something else.
Thank you. Supervisor Clendenning, you look like you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I'm not voting for the budget at 2%. I'll tell you that right now, and I know a lot of other people are. I think it's ridiculous what we're doing to our employees when everything else is going up. Just look at the bids that we got now. How much is going up and happening? We're going to say we're going to give our employees 2% more.
Supervisor Wagner.
I understand Mr. Clendenning's sympathy and devotion to our employees. There is also, there should also be an equal amount of sympathy and care to our taxpayers. So we, as the Operations Committee, have to take that role very seriously.
These will be further vetted, obviously, as we move through the process. All right. So moving through those meeting minutes from the September 6th, 7, 8, and 9, that brings me to page 10, which is the Clerk's Monthly Letter of Comments. He's getting into a busy time of year here. Monthly letter from our Human Resources Department, page 11, and goes through page 15. Office of the Treasurer, page 16. Wellness on 17. And then before we get to the resolution on page 18, our vice chair had resolution from the floor, I believe, or a motion from the floor.
Yes, thank you. So there will be a resolution later to execute contracts for the jail, but this is a separate resolution or a separate motion that I'd like to make. So I'm going to motion to accept the lowest responsible bids for the various categories of construction for the jail product as determined by the facilities manager in conjunction with the construction manager and reduced where available after appropriate vetting has been completed.
I have a second by LaFontaine. Do we have discussion? Supervisor Rosar.
So I, so we're talking here about a project that is about $40 million over what we have budgeted for. Is it just presumptuous that we're going to say this is going to go forward? Do we not have a chance to talk about this again because of the significant increase in the project? Is the assumption made that we're going to go forward with it even though it's a $40 million overrun?
Laura, do you want, go ahead.
Sure. We did discuss it a little bit this morning. We can continue to discuss that now, and so I would invite any other options if someone has a reasonable solution. Unfortunately, the need for the jail, in my opinion, hasn't changed, and in fact, it's become more urgent as costs for out-of-county housing has increased, transportation has increased, and the cost to renovate our current jail is also increased. If anyone else would like to add to that, I'd love to hear it, too. But if anyone has a reasonable solution, I think we're all ears. We're all on the same page as far as this cost increase being extremely difficult to
Supervisor Winch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think our original resolution was for not to exceed 57 million or 59, whatever it is. You better check that first before you go up.
Supervisor Clendenning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of the resolution. We needed jail. We needed a jail 20 years ago, and I'm not even going to call it a may, but the county board at that time voted, yeah, go ahead, build a jail, but we're not going to pay for it. Right now, worth paying for it. Right now, worth paying for it. I'm sorry that everything went off, but that's the way it is. I'm voting for it, and I hope a majority of you people vote for this. We need a jail. We've talked about it as long enough. Let's do it.
I mean, just to note quickly, Supervisor Bry apparently has joined us virtually. I guess, you know, typically, I don't make any comments as a chair up here. I guess I'd ask for your indulgence and allow me to speak to this for a moment. We've got really four issues to deal with before us here today that involve the jail. Does anybody have any problem with me making some comments? No? All right. Some of you were just at the WCA conference, and one of the things we talked about there was the responsibilities of county boards. You know, in a jail, for instance, is this a mandate? Well, it's not a mandate that we build a new jail, but we have to have somewhere to incarcerate individuals who need to be incarcerated for public safety. Is it a need? Absolutely. We determined that. We went through years of study. We need a jail. Do I want to build one? That's the other one. You know, mandate, need, and want. Do I want to? No, I don't want to, but I need to. I don't have anywhere else to put people. We've had cost estimates now of refurbishing or remodeling a jail we have, which would (a) reduce capacity, increase the number of people we'd have to ship out of county, and the cost of that would exceed $30 million in a Band-Aid effect. Now, one of the things I always look at is the impact of the tax levy. You know, how do you make that palatable for the public? How do you explain that? I've looked at everything here, every viable alternative. Spoke to people for the last year and especially the last couple of weeks, and I don't think there is one. I'd love to hear one, but I don't see a viable alternative. As I talk to construction companies, people around the state, costs have doubled in most cases. If you thought you were going to build $150,000 home a couple of years ago, affordable housing in some of the municipalities, those are $300,000 to $400,000 houses now. It's a reality. So the cost isn't going to go down. It's going to go up. My feeling is we absolutely need one. I don't know where you go if you don't go this direction. You know, one of the things I don't want to be, and I'll name it specifically, I don't want to be, you know, New York, Seattle, Portland, Chicago, you pick the place where public safety isn't at the forefront. There are certain people that need to be incarcerated. We have to have the capacity to incarcerate them for public safety. I don't like when my taxes go up either. My tax bills, I'm going to guess higher than most, because I own a fair amount of property within the county. I don't like an increase, but I understand sometimes that I have to do it. So I don't know that there's another, that there's another way to do this. So as we continue this discussion, I, you know, I'm willing, I'm all ears. I'm willing to listen, but, you know, we're well on our way to do this. I do not see a decrease in bond rates. If you take the initial $58 million issue we did, you blend that with the current rate we're at about, or the current bonding that we'll have to do, we're looking at a blended rate of about 3%. I don't think there's anybody in this room that thinks that's going to go down. Costs, even if the cost of materials went down slightly, the cost of labor is escalating at an unbelievable rate, you know, almost exponentially. So, and I also know that there are a few people who were going to bid on this project. I think some of them actually did turn in bids, actually went that far, and then withdrew them because of the increased costs. So that's kind of the two cents, what I've heard over time, and thought I would share that with you. Supervisor Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am no fan of the $90 million by any stretch of the imagination, but I do remember that I said on this floor back when we passed the bond issue for $58 billion, and which proceeds are in the treasury right now, as a matter of fact, also of which we have used on this project somewhere in the vicinity of $3 million already. I think what I said on this floor back when they passed it, I think I had boners to the, by my fellow board members, that this is like playing poker, and this was our Andy Up. So the old saying was, in for a dime, you're in for a dollar. So as soon as we passed that bond issue, basically, we were committed to this project. And now, we can't back out. We took a risk of bidding, but who knew? Who, you know, inflation's supposed to be 8%, and we got 40% increases. Something's very wrong with this picture. And I, our project manager is going to go into these bids, and he's going to work with the low bidders and see if there can be other additional savings in there. I don't expect any dramatic decrease, but I do expect there's going to be some decrease in the overall cost. The bottom line is, we have a reason for doing this because the old jail cannot be renovated. What we have, we had cast iron pipes underneath that are embedded in the concrete that are rusting out and collapsing. We've had power failures there. And on top of that, we're paying somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars a year to house our prisoners somewhere else. That's the whole point of doing it. And by the way, just for the record, when we start getting into the cost cutting and the fervent vetting of each bid, I hope we're going to be careful not to reduce or redesign anything so great that it negates the reason we're doing this in the first place, and that is to house our own prisoners, to save a million to a million and a half a year on those prisoners themselves. I don't like this, but I've got to support it. And I, if it comes down to a vote of whether or not to proceed with it, I think it's a no-brainer that, yes, we must proceed because we've gone so far down that road already. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Supervisor Valzine.
Thank you. I would also like to point out, from a county safety standpoint, that we're struggling to keep corrections officers in the jail, and I am concerned that if we decide to cancel the project, that without an end in sight, we're going to be in a real employment crisis.
Supervisor Zerflu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At my own risk, I rise after the eloquent man from Marshfield, Supervisor Wagner. I'm sorry, Supervisor Fisher, it seems like you're, anyway. Am I right in understanding the motion was you're going to take all the low bids, and that's all it's going to be? My one concern, I'm sorry. My one concern is sometimes you like projects like this, which we need. Let's get beyond that. It's going to cost too much to back out, that's for sure. But I think we need to keep our local people that have bid on this, and if it's a low thing and they have to be a little higher, personally, I would go with the local folks because that's keeping more money here. So is that in stone that you will always take the low bid? Thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes?
I'm going to ask for Kurt's help on this one a little bit. There were some local bids, and he can maybe provide more context for them, but the vetting process has not been completed because this was just last week. So it will be taking low bids after vetting is appropriately done, but Kurt can give some more information.
Thank you, Chairman. I do understand the direction to be able to keep the local contractors involved, and I don't have the final number of local contractors here, but there are a few. But the lowest qualified contractor is something that I've done with counties throughout the state, just because you got to honor that lowest bid in parliament. There's challenges if you do. I've been a part of it when a county has not, and then there can be opposition, legal action by the low bidder because they did have a low qualified number. So I always steer towards the direction of the lowest qualified contractor. All I can tell you is that you gave an opportunity to all the local contractors to earn the work, and you've got to let that low bid process work through because you're dealing with public funds. If you're dealing with private funds, it's a completely different animal, but publicly, I would not advise to go to a number two just because they're local. If you have a qualified contractor, they have the scope that's covered. I think they should be awarded it, so.
Supervisor Voight, did you have your hand up before?
I think Supervisor Voight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder, this county spent $1,800,000 to house our prisoners out of the county last year. It's a fact, and it's down. Just think about that in the next couple of years, how that's going to balloon more. I sat through this procedure that you're doing eight years ago in Sawyer County. We put an 85% addition onto the Sawyer County Jail with a pod, and we did it for $3 million. At the time, I think, some people, I sat right where Laura was sitting, I was vice chair of the county board, and I also chaired the ad hoc committee to build that jail. I think the people in Hayward were about ready to ride me out of town on a rail at the time, but those very people came to me three years later and said, well, we're glad we did it. We should have done it a long time ago. So I'm definitely going to vote for this, and I hope you do, too. Thank you.
Supervisor Butky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm about as conservative as they're going to get, you're going to see. But we should have learned the lesson. The first time I was on the county board, the jail issue came up, and I was turned down for different reasons. But I hope we don't make the same mistake again. It's needed. There's been a lot of great comments. Nobody likes spending that kind of money, but we got to do it, and we have to do it right. And I would mention that I know when we did the remodeling at Edgore Haven, that we did get some local contractors. You might want to look into that. I fully agree with you, they got to be qualified and so on and so forth, but it'd be worth looking into how that came down at the time. I just, like I said, nobody likes to spend that kind of money, but it's so necessary. And I hope we don't skimp on things, on certain things now when it comes up because we're trying to save face with the taxpayers that is going to come and get us in the future. So we have to spend a bunch of money, let's do it right till it lasts. Thank you.
I know the discussion is somewhat general. That involves all four resolutions that we're going to deal with, but I don't want to cut off any of that discussion. Supervisor Rosar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to go back to that question that Supervisor Winch asked about, that original resolution that we passed not to exceed a certain original resolution that we passed not to exceed a certain amount. Would we need another resolution to come before this body because we're $40 million over that, or is that not an issue?
I think that was in regard to the bond itself and not necessarily the entire project cost. Peter, that, Nottingham's head, yes.
So we would need them to pass another resolution for this additional $40 million?
No, each of those bonds, as they come forward, has the parameters of what you're doing in it. So if you have another bond issue of, I'm making up a number, of $10, that issue would be not to exceed 10, correct, Peter? I wouldn't have to, he's shaking his head, yes again, so.
So how do we deal with this additional $40 million?
One bite at a time. No, as you're looking at, as, as you look at the, as you look at some of the financing options that, that we're certainly gonna talk about, you, you can see that this is not done in a single borrowing resolution. We're looking at spreading this out possibly over some time as we see where bond rates go, and that's one of the things I talked about, blended rates. You know, we did this first part at 2%. We're looking at the passability hitting four, but we don't know, which would be a blended rate, it may be less than 3% for the whole project, so.
So there will be additional borrowing resolutions coming forward to come up with the extra $40 million?
You got them in front of you today. Part of them, yeah. You know, I mean, I guess all I add to, I don't seem to have his hand up right now. There is a responsibility to taxpayer, and I think a really great example is, we looked at a 30-plus million dollar project for a human services building, and you remember that, some of you were on that committee. We were able to find a way to do that for a $2 million, basically, long-term lease purchase price, another $2 million in, in renovations, maybe three. So we have less than $5 million of taxpayer money when, in a project where we could've spent 30, or would've had to spend 30. So I guess what I wanna provide is information to the taxpayers, we're not spending your money where we don't think we need to. The other part of this goes back to tax levy going way back, and I'm not trying to give a history lesson, but the philosophy in Wood County has always been, don't ask the taxpayer for money until you need it. There were counties that taxed at the maximum prior to levy limits, get away with everything they could, and then, and in fact, you could bank some money. Our philosophy's always been, the money is best left in the taxpayer's pocket until such time as we need it. And so, like I said earlier, unless somebody can give me a really good viable alternative to the need that we've already, you know, ascertained, I have a very difficult time not supporting this wholeheartedly. So, right now, Trent or Laura, could you reread the motion that we have before us because that is not in your packet?
The resolution that I have in the minutes will be a motion to accept the lowest responsible bids for the various categories of construction for the jail project as determined by the facilities manager in conjunction with the construction manager. Motion by Valance, signed seconded by LaFontaine.
There was an addition to that?
Okay, go for it.
And reduced where available after appropriate vetting has been done.
Yeah, what she said is what I got.
And, and part of this is, you know, on, on some bids, on some projects, they're, they are really good for the day the bid is given or issued. There's a very short timeframe to accept these, and I, my anticipation is not that they're gonna go down. So anyway, we have a motion before us and a second. Supervisor Clendenning?
Yes, I would just like to say one other thing. And you remember, a few years ago, maybe five, six years ago, we was gonna build, build these or in this area for $52 million?
I used the wrong number, I said 30. You're talking to human services buildings?
I, I, I'm talking, yes.
Okay.
Anyway, we, we saved that money by going out and purchasing, well, not so much purchasing, but having the Riverblock building. And the Riverblock building ended up with $5 million, so there you're saving your $40 million with my ten years.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the bid part of this, on the acceptance of the bid part? Any further discussion? Trent, can you put that up on the board? All right. Not seeing any further discussion, I'd ask you to please vote. Yes. Thank you, Supervisor Bry. That resolution passed 15-3, where did I get an abstention? Supervisor Wench?
Wench, did you mean to press yes? I'm just throwing it out there, just throwing it out there. I'm assuming your vote was no. You don't, don't push any buttons, Bill. Your, your vote is no?
Okay, okay. The abstention confused me a little bit there. All right. Supervisor Pollak?
I don't know what happened. I did vote aye for it, so it's showing up negative votes.
I have that noted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. So 16-3 is the final tally, 16-3, affirmative, that resolution passes, motion. All right, let's go back to the packet. Begins on page 18, runs through page 31. There may be a, a lot of additional information that you would like as we go through this discussion process. We have all those people here to answer any of those questions for those of you who weren't here earlier during the jail study committee meeting. So, page 18, the resolution, I'd ask the clerk to please read that.
Okay, this will be Resolution 22-9-1, the resolution authorizing the issuance of $10 million general obligation promissory notes and authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $10 million note anticipation note.
Motion by La, what, are we gonna put those, motion by LaFontaine, seconded by Hamilton? Motion by LaFontaine and seconded by Hamilton. Now we're getting in, Supervisor Rosar earlier asked about the financing and how this moves forward. This resolution is before us, we have a motion and a second. If we have questions, and some of that was in, does everybody in the room have this Baird handout? And we do have the representative here to explain that further if you would like that. We do have a motion seconded on the floor, so I'll open this up for discussion, and I would certainly allow any explanation from Baird on this as we move forward. Any discussion on the resolution? I know we've had a lot of discussion already that kind of revolved around all this. Any, Supervisor Butky?
I did not get one, so if I could get one, please.
Sure.
I could share, you can share your one.
Did you want some time to look at this? So I should probably turn this over from Laura so I don't keep talking from up here, but this, this is in regard to how we are gonna approach this overrun and how we're gonna handle this as we move forward, you know, as we, as we move forward with bonding, whether it be all at once, tear the Band-Aid off, if we do this incrementally. And one of the discussions at the meeting earlier today was to smooth that tax rate so people don't get hit that hard. Laura, did you wanna, I've got this open for discussion.
Yeah, I would just invite Justin Fisher forward to kind of explain how we can go about this additional financing.
That is this handout.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here. So went through a lot of this with jail ad hoc committee this morning, but kinda to go through it real briefly with everyone that was not involved. Obviously, you know, when we originally looked at this project, we were looking at $58 million. You know, based on the interest rates at that particular time, we looked at options ranging from doing all the $58 million last year to spreading it out over a multiple year period. Well, we were at a historically low interest rate environment at that particular time. It made sense to, to jump on the opportunity and lock in the $58 million, which was the lowest in history. Fortunately, we did, right? And, and was able to get basically a 2% interest rate for 20-year financing. We knew that interest rates were going to go up, and all signs pointed to happening this year. We knew that was our opportunity, and like I said, 2% interest rate. Today, we're not gonna be at 2%. You see it in, in, all over the news, mortgage rates, everything, interest rates have just gone up in general. Fortunately, you know, if, if we did the $58 million last year at where the interest rate is today, that would've cost an additional about $10 million, just in interest cost alone. So, you know, fortunately, we were able to capture it, but then the question was, how do we account for this potential overage here? Well, when we originally looked at it, we were talking $14 million. So we had a plan for that, we looked at a bunch of different options for that. Well, then the, the number came in, you know, higher at around the 90-plus million. So then it was, you know, I did myself, but yeah, really brainstorming, going through different ideas, doing a lot of number crunching and kind of figuring out a solution to, to how can we, you know, keep our original plan that we had for the county, which is basically to not only account for this jail project, but also be factoring in the future capital improvement projects that are needed for the county outside the jail. I, I need to factor that into the overall picture as well. So factoring in your existing debt, plus the, the potential, the jail projects that we're talking about here, plus all the, the capital improvement projects that are going forward, and, and having that tax impact, you know, be reasonable enough to take on this project and not burden the taxpayers overwhelmingly. So when we originally talked about the plan at $58 million, the, the target not to exceed tax debt service levy impact was 35 cents per $1,000 valuation. So on a 30, on a $100,000 home, $35 is kind of what we were talking. Based on the, the new plan, the, the target not to exceed maximum debt service levy impact is now 60 cents, so essentially 25 cents additional from where we originally talked. You know, we're gonna spread that over potentially a couple of years here. So in your packet, there's a scenario one and a scenario two. Scenario one spreads it out between the borrowing that we're talking about today. The majority of the project is gonna be done, you know, in 2024, so 2023, at the end of 2023, that's when the larger borrowing would potentially occur. So depending on how fast the money is spent, where project costs are coming in, what interest rates are doing, that's all gonna dictate kind of how we mold that particular borrowing because there's a lot of external factors that go into it. But this is just a, an overall potential plan that we can move forward with. So it factors in, say, $22 million in 2023, and then a final six and a half in 2024. And this strategy is using, basically, if you borrow $10 million or less in a calendar year, you're, you get to issue as bank qualified, which gives essentially a tax benefit to the potential purchasers, ultimately allowing them to give you lower interest rates. So that's why the target this year was to do not to exceed $10 million, and that way, you know, with the 58 plus the six and a half, you'd have $64 million, $64 and a half million to get you through 2023 until we do the, the borrowing in 2023. So again, you can see the right side of the page, how the potential tax impacts may look over time, but ultimately, knowing that, again, we won't, the goal was to start having the debt service levy no rate decrease in 2027 because, again, we know that capital projects are gonna continue to be needed as investments for the county and so forth, and this plan allows you to be able to absorb those potential projects without having further tax increases to your county constituents. So that's scenario one. Scenario two says, as Chairman said, kind of rip off the Band-Aid in 2023 and do the remaining of the project at the end of 2023, which in this particular case is $28 and a half million. You know, this does have a little bit more of a tax impact in 2024. There can be a little bit of smoothing there, but again, a lot of this is gonna be dependent on what is the valuation of the county gonna look like come August through October. That, that really tells me a lot of information because then I can either push up principal, saving the, the county interest costs by paying down debt faster, or if the valuation comes in less, then, you know, we need to reevaluate some things and potentially restructure the debt a little bit from what I'm showing you here. You know, I'm assuming hopefully a conservative growth rate of 2.5%. I did, you know, going into this project, you grew over 10% this past year. That was great news because what it allowed us to do is we were able to, on this particular borrowing, push up principal and pay down debt much faster than we anticipated. So that was good news. Now what is it gonna look like come end of this year for the valuation? You know, are we gonna be able to, you know, have this tax impact be a little bit less, potentially, you know? And, and that's what we were evaluating, and so that's why there's not necessarily a scenario that needs to be picked today, it's really just to say, here's some options that we're looking at, and depending on how things continue to progress over the next year, interest rates, valuation, all sorts of different things, project costs, that will help decide what scenario makes the most sense at that particular time.
And it was asked earlier too, you know, you see the Fed increasing interest rates, that short-term borrowing, you know, whether they go up 75 basis points or 100, that doesn't not necessarily directly reflect where we're gonna be on a bond issue. Supervisor Rosar, to answer your question that you asked to begin with, part of the reason we've spread this out is we don't know where it's gonna go. It, it could come down a little bit, we certainly have seen a spike right now due to inflation. Got elections coming up and a whole administration possibility, so we don't know, and that's the reason we've approached it in this manner. Supervisor Rosar?
Oh my goodness. I was hanging myself here. You obviously recognize I've lost sleep over those $40 million, and so I want to be, and I'm so glad you used the word conservative, that was a really good thing to do. The thing about it is, is we've gotta consider our, our people that live on budgets and fixed incomes and things like that, so I'm all in favor of smoothing it out so at least people can prepare for an increase in their property taxes. You know, we have an aging population in Wood County, and a lot of those aging people do fixed incomes, and so I don't wanna tax people out of their homes. I want people to be able to afford the houses that they've lived in for a long time, and I think that's why I've struggled over this, and I really appreciate you putting a scenario together that smoothed out the tax impact because I think that's gonna be really important for a large number of our population, and that would be what I would favor as we go forward. But this obviously is the cause of the ulcer before I'm done with this, but it, it is what it is, and I do agree, I voted yes for that, and I, but it just, the state of our economy, the state of our nation, inflation, all of those things just aren't enough to cause an heartburn.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a scenario where in '26, '27, somewhere through there, if rates go back down again, that we can redo these bonds and get a lower rate on them?
So each bond has its own call feature, prepayment feature, and when you're dealing with 20-year financing, typically, the call feature on there is going to be in that eight to 10-year range. And so when you issue the bonds through eight years, no, you do not have the ability to refinance and get a lower interest rate in eight years. If interest rates are low, you absolutely can refinance and take out, you know, into a lower cost, lower interest rate financing for the remaining, say, 12 years of that.
So any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, we have the motion, we have the second, you have the resolution before you. I would ask that you please vote.
Supervisor Bry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that resolution passes 17-2, 17-2. All right, moving forward in your packet and kind of along the same lines, the next resolution, I ask the clerk to please read that. That begins on page 32 and all the accompanying information behind it.
This will be Resolution 22-9-2, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $10 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by LaFontaine. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Supervisor Bry?
Yes. Again, that resolution passed 17-2, 17-2. Pulling another resolution with your permission to the front of the packet, this is on page 205. Page 205 of your packet, it deals with the same issues we're dealing with, and this basically authorizes, I'm gonna have Trent read it, but while you're finding that, authorizes the facilities manager to execute contracts on behalf of Wood County to relate to this. And I certainly wanna provide Ruben that cover, even though I don't know if he's ever personally responsible anyway, but this is important and part of the, the entire process. So page 205, we'll take action on that. Now I'd ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 22-9-3, what Lance just said. To authorize a facilities manager to execute contracts on behalf of Wood County directly related to the construction of the new jail and the demolition of the old related to the construction of the new jail and the demolition of the old jail despite the lack of full funding at this time. Fiscal note is none.
I have a motion by Supervisor Butky, a second by Supervisor Rosar. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please vote.
Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
And that resolution passes 16-3, 16-3. Just make a, first of all, thank you for your attention. This is a big, you know, it's the biggest project we're ever going to do in our lifetime. It's huge. I can tell you this, though, in talking to other counties around the state, they're dealing with the same exact issues we are. We are dealing with inflation, we're dealing with extreme increases in project costs, but as, we're also dealing with increases in wages to some extent. We're increasing, you're seeing increases in social security, some of those other income sources. I don't like it, but you have to deal with it. The other thing we spoke about earlier, just so I can fill you in, is there's a fairly large contingency budget in this that Kurt explained is probably, you know, done on the very conservative side and at a much higher percentage rate than is normally reserved as contingency. The Jail Study Committee is going to put in place some rules, regulations, and put their thoughts into how that contingency part may be used going forward, or how that may be tapped, or what additional funding out of that could be used as they go. In other words, not just the permission to spend $10 million additionally. That's just informational. All right, let's go back to the packet. Kurt, thank you very much. You're dismissed.
Thanks.
Back to Ruben's office, where you guys. You know, I sat up here a couple of weeks ago, maybe it wasn't even that long, September 15th, it wasn't even that long ago, I believe, as they were, as these bids were coming in. And this is a small part of what these people have reviewed in the last few days, just so you know. So we're trying really hard to get a mill reopened here in Wisconsin Rapids, and we are doing our part, working on that pretty hard. All right, back to your packet. Pages 52 and 53, the Health and Human Services Committee meeting of August 25th. Same committee, their meeting of September 8th on page 54. Monthly letter comments from the Health Department on pages 55 through 59. And we, we just, one of the things we're going to be dealing with is the, the money that we have received in opioid settlement. The first tranche of that came in. We're going to have additional monies coming in in the future. That was the first third of that settlement. The WCA, I guess under my direction, we put together, called a blue ribbon panel, to advise counties in what might be the best use of those funds and how to expend those. And Sue Smith from our county has been appointed to that committee. So we'll be getting the information from Sue as it becomes available. So thank you there. The Human Services Department, their report, beginning with Director Vruwink, since 60, and it runs through 66. Veteran Service Officer, Veteran Service Officers' Report on 67 and 68. The Wood County Public Safety Committee meeting of September 12th, beginning on 69, and that runs through page 73, 69 through 73. Traffic Safety Commission meeting, June 8th, 74 and 75. LEPC, 76 and 77. The Humane Officers' Report, this is Brooke Match. Brooke, right, as of yesterday, I believe, is our only humane officer right now. Am I correct, Kim, in saying that? Yeah. So Brooke is our humane officer. These reports begin on the 24th of July, they run through basically very recently here, end of August, early September. They begin on 78 and run through page 91. The memorandum, memorandum of understanding for the Wood County Joint Special Response Team with the Marshfield Police Department, Wood County Sheriff's Department, page 92, 3, and 4. There was a request in here for tuition assistance, leave kind of permission from the Human Resources Department dealt with by the committee 95, 6, and 7. And then we go to the August monthly report of the Sheriff's Department, beginning on 98, and that runs all the way through page 119, 98 through 119. Anybody have any questions there? Because Supervisor Zerflu wants to answer some questions. No? No? Okay. Page 120 in your packet, resolution from the Public Safety Committee, I'd ask the clerk to please read that.
This will be Resolution 22-9-4. To authorize Wood County to enter into an agreement and seek funding under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 165.90, for law enforcement services on restricted tribal lands. Fiscal note, $24,730.
I have a motion by Clint Denning. I have a second by Zerflu. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I'd ask you to please vote.
Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
That resolution passed 19-0, 19-0. All right, going back to the packet, minutes of the SEED Committee from September 7th, beginning on 121, runs through 125. Various reports from the Golden Sands Resource Conservation Development Council, beginning on 126, and those run through 134, 126 through 134. Staff reports from Land and Water, beginning on 135 through 139. Citizens Groundwater meeting from August 15th, 140, 41, and 42. Update from the Office of Planning and Zoning, beginning on 143, and that goes through 148. Then that brings us to the next resolution in the package brought forth by SEED.
This will be Resolution 22-9-5. To authorize the sale of former 4-H property for $7,500 and to allocate the sale proceeds to the 4-H program. Fiscal note, the receipt of $7,500 in real property sale proceeds and the allocation of the funds to the 4-H program do total $7,500.
Okay, that was also brought forth by the Property Information Technology Committee. I have a motion by Supervisor Hamilton, a second by Supervisor Lightnem. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Again, I'd ask you to please vote.
Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
A resolution passed unanimously, 19-0. Going forward in the packet, page 151, another resolution from the SEED Committee.
This will be Resolution 22-9-6. To seek Wood County Board approval to amend the 2022 Wood County Mill Creek budget for unanticipated state monies and to appropriate those monies to Mill Creek expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenues from the Wisconsin DNR, and the adjustment to the budget totals $140,000.
Motion by Lightnem, second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please vote.
Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
And once again, that resolution passed 19-0, unanimous vote. All right, moving forward, minutes of the Judicial and Legislative Committee, their meeting of August 23rd on 152 and 153. Their meeting from September 2nd, beginning on 154 and running through 157. Update from the Child Support Agency on 158. From the Corp Counsel on 159, as well as 160 and 161. Want to make a quick note, I, at the conference the other day, the WCA conference, Brent Vruwink, I believe, serves as the Vice President of the Child Support Agency, and he was at that conference, appreciated that attendance, answering questions all week and getting input from other people. So I always appreciate when those department heads and/or constitutional officers have the opportunity to attend, because their input goes a long way in, in us crafting at the local level here, our resolutions and our, you know, our policies as we move forward, as well as the state legislature. So I really appreciate their being there. Again, Corp Counsel, Peter, who usually has one page, now page 162 through 164. This has been a really hot topic right now in the state of Wisconsin. I think, Trent, you've dealt with public records here recently a lot, something that the Clerks Association is working with. But if you have any questions on either open meetings laws, and public records, retention thereof, quorums, walking quorums, seek the advice of our Corp Counsel. Have an update from the Registered Deeds Office on 165. And then we move to 166, which begins the minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee, their meeting of September 1st, 166 through 168. Have an update from the Highway Commissioner, 169 through 174. And then the Parks Department, 175 through 179. The Property Information Technology Committee, Tuesday, August 23rd, their minutes, 180 and 181. They also had a meeting on September 6th, on 182, 83, and 84. Have an update from that department, beginning on 185, and that runs through 188. Have an update from our Facilities Manager, Ruben, you've got like a full-time job just reporting to the board, but one page here, page 189, although part of this packet you received is stuff he's been working on. So Ruben, thank you for your work on this. I know it's been monumental, the amount of work that's been accomplished on this project. And then we have the resolution brought forth by the Property Information Technology Committee on page 190.
This will be Resolution 22-9-7. To authorize staff to negotiate for the acquisition of leased property to be utilized by the Information Technology Department to ensure IT operations are not disrupted by construction. Final approval of any negotiations would require a resolution passed by the County Board. Fiscal note, none. The authority being conveyed by the resolution is limited to negotiations.
I think it's Supervisor Clint Denning first, Supervisor Hamilton second. Discussion? Any discussion? And I just wanted to be clear, so everybody knows, this is, this pertains to County Board rule we have, where they seek the authority to ask, this does not give permission to spend. So, any discussion? Any discussion? All right, please vote.
Supervisor Bry.
Yes.
I would get them.
No, you didn't.
Well, I'm good. Oh, too early.
And that resolution passed 17-2, 17-2. As we move on, page 191 in your packet, begins the minutes of the South Central Library System Board of Trustees, that's 191 through 194. The ARPA Ad Hoc Funding Committee, minutes 195 and 196. Minutes of the Jail Construction Ad Hoc Committee, 197 and 198. Another memorandum from Corp Counsel Castenholtz, you're busy this month, Peter. 199, 200. There's some information that's going to come forth here very quickly. And so Peter put this memorandum out, we had a very interesting scenario come up here. This was on basically late payment, and us receiving that payment late on a property tax issue. There were several options as to how the taxpayer could appeal this. One was in writing, they also had the ability to appear in person. The issue is before you've had an opportunity to read this, the appellant decided not to appear today, not to appear today unless the last, you, you are here? You are here, I, I had information that you had. All right, so Peter, was that something that, then I can take three minutes of comment from both? Okay. I want to make sure that, once we received it in writing, and that we had not had previous knowledge of the fact that they're going to be here, we'll do that. So I guess at this point, I'll allow three minutes for both, the appellant and for our Treasurer's Office to make a statement. You do have their written statements in front of you. At that point in time, I will allow some discussion, we'll go from there, a little out of order, and then a motion as to which way to proceed on this issue. So with that, I guess I would, I've got to get back to where I am here, so. And Mr. Short, do you pronounce it exactly the way it looks spelled? Mr. Short, I'd ask you if you'd like to come forward to have that opportunity, the microphone, and make that case. After that, we'll allow the Treasurer to follow up, and you do have the written documentation in front of you. Please.
The envelope that I mailed the property taxes in was stamped July 25th. Somehow, between Marshfield and Green Bay, it took two hours to port. It had another stamp on it, and I'm not sure what date she said it arrived, but it was after the five-day window. I've been paying property taxes in the county for 20 years, I've never had a late payment. Just asking for some consideration of what the envelope stamps in. It's hard for me to read these laws and understand them exactly, but it seems to me it says, as long as it was stamped before the due date of the 31st, it's fine. She had made a comment to me that I could have pre-stamped the envelope and nailed it later, which I guess is true, but it very easily could have been the other way. Didn't mail it, and people have mentioned lately to post office, been a problem. $900, almost $1,000, I think, for four days arriving late seemed excessive. That's one here.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Call in our Treasurer. Heather, would you like to make a verbal statement, or?
Thank you. I guess just what I had put in my letter in there, the office is always on by USPS stamp. I reached around to my 71 other counterparts all around the state, nobody accepts the postage meter as the USPS stamp. I can't, you know, the mail always, according to USPS, gets a cancellation stamp on it if the meter date is stale-dated from when they receive it. So I'm just following all the laws and rules that I've found regarding this situation.
All right, I'm going to open this up for discussion. You've seen the written testimony. Is there discussion on this issue? Is there any discussion? Not everybody all at once. All right, then, at this point, since I don't see any discussion, you've received the written testimony, you have that before you, then I entertain a motion from the floor. And I assume, Peter, this takes a simple majority either way. If the motion fails on the floor, we entertain another motion. So I'm looking for a motion from the floor. Supervisor Hamilton.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
For a motion to deny.
Well, let's go.
Or to approve, or?
Well, I was, I was thinking there might be some.
I'm not asking you to make the motion.
No. I was thinking there might be some discussion ahead of that, that's why I kind of went the other direction. But the motion could be either way. It could be to, in effect, deny that claim and follow what the Treasurer has stated has been past practice in statute, or to make an exception in this case. So you could make a motion either direction.
To deny the claim.
Okay. So a motion to deny the claim. Do I have a second to that motion? Do I have a second to that motion? Second by Supervisor LaFontaine. All right, I'll open that up to discussion again. We have a motion to deny the claim, we have a second by Supervisor LaFontaine. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, Peter, I think I can do this if, in a single motion. So failure would go the other way, and then in effect would allow for that exception. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to deny, we have a second to that motion, that passes, the appellant's request is denied. If it fails, his request is honored. All right? So please go to your little key fob and vote.
Supervisor Bry.
No.
So the motion passed 11-0, the appellant's request is denied, and the Treasurer's Office, I guess, prevails in this particular matter. I want to thank both of you for your written response and for appearing verbally to make that case. Thank you very much. All right, moving forward, we have one last issue to deal with here, and that's relating to the life and public service of Vernon Bud Virjinsky. And many of you in this room knew Bud, either probably, there's nobody in this room who knew him during his time of service on the County Board, but you certainly were either aware of or worked with him on, on city issues over time, is a longtime mayor of the city. His daughter-in-law, Connie, actually served on the board with a number of us in the past. So there's a family relationship there as well. So Trent, I'd ask you to please read at least the.
This will be Resolution 22-9-8 relating to the life and public service of Vernon Bud Virjinsky.
Okay, and a motion by Hamilton, a second by Clint Denning. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And I want to note that that's unanimous, and then I would ask you to please rise in a moment of silence in respect of the passing and the life and service of Vernon Bud Virjinsky.
Okay.
I thank you. I thank you. You know, we do these, you know, in respect of the passing of former County Board Supervisors. And, you know, I did read a letter from Libby Rosenick after Louis Rosenick passed away. We had an event a few weeks ago out at Edgewater Haven. They had a picnic out there, and a number of, Supervisor Winch attended, a number, Supervisor Valentine, I saw her out there at the time, and I was there. I've had, that's one place where I was, again, approached by a relative of one of the people who we have honored in the past. And it's happened a couple of times now in the past few months where family members have gotten a hold of me, and they have just thanked the Board for their recognition of that service. And I wanted to relay that, because I think it's nice to hear. We deal with difficult issues. We also deal with death at times, and, but it's nice to hear that the action that we took on this Board meant something to the family, and it has. So, I greatly appreciate it. Is there anything else that needs to come before this Board today?
ADRC.
ADRC, present special order of business, correct. But nothing else in the packet. All right, ADRC, ready to go?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on the motion, on the short motion.
Yes.
Just a clarification. The vote to deny it passed, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I voted no to not deny it, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so, we have Mike here today before us to make a presentation on the ADRC. This is something we entered into a number of years ago. It's been extremely beneficial for our county in the services that have been provided, and the fact that we've stabilized the budget over many, many years. So, Mr. Ray, this is your first time appearing for us, newer Director of the ADRC. The floor is yours, sir.
Excellent, thank you. I appreciate the time to come before you today. So, my name is Mike Ray. I am the Executive Director for the ADRC of Central Wisconsin. I promise you, I won't take a ton of your time today. I know that this is the last item on the agenda, and you've had a lot to think through today. So, bear with me for about 10 minutes, and I'll be done. So, appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Just a little brief overview of our organization and how we're structured. So, each county in the state of Wisconsin is required to be able to have an Aging and Disability Resource Center, and they also are required to have an Aging Services Office. We've combined that into one organization as an integrated organization that provides both those services. The, we are a four-county organization that serves Wood, Marathon, Lincoln, and Langley. We are formed by those four counties as a part of an intergovernmental agreement to be able to provide those required services within those counties. There's a lot of different benefits that we see in being a regional organization, including the efficiencies of service. As Chairman mentioned, we have stabilized our budget. In fact, we have had the same amount of levy that comes into our budget for this, since the inception of our organization in 2006. We've not had any increase in, or requested any increase in levy since that portion of time. With that said, levy makes up about 12% of our budget. The remaining part of our budget comes from state and federal dollars coming into our program. So, you may have heard the population is aging. So, there is, you know, definitely an increase in the service request coming to our organization. But thankfully, to this point in time, we've been able to maintain our budget at a stable rate. So, what is an ADRC, and what do Aging Services provide? So, we are designated as the organization to go to for anything related to aging or disability. So, we serve older adults 60 and older, and adults with a disability, 18 and older, with a whole spectrum of different services, which could look like a variety of different ways. So, you have an individual who is maybe getting older and having a little bit more difficulty with maintaining their independence in home, and where do you go? What do you do? How do you, how do you help them maintain that independence? How do you keep them within their home? Where do the organization connect about that? We can talk to you about what service options are available to maintain that health and independence within that home, or if there's a need for other, other service providing provisions, then we can talk about what those next steps will be and what your options may look like. So, we really go through that whole spectrum. Sometimes we get calls just of, what is the name of a service provider, and where, how can I connect with them, all the way to sitting down with a family within their home, talking to them about what supports and services are needed to help them maintain their level of independence, what those may cost, looking at their personal resources and how that they can spend those most efficiently and effectively, and then looking at what other options may be available to them if they're only able to afford that. If they don't have the ability to afford their own support, we are also the entry point into the state programs, the state publicly funded programs, Family Care and IRIS. So, we are the entry point into those programs and do the functional determination if a person is functionally eligible for them. We also have our caregiver support coordination program. So, as, again, as a population is aging and people are having more needs, a lot of people don't necessarily choose to go into caregiving or want to become a caregiver. They become a caregiver by necessity or situation. You have a family member that now needs support, and you're the person, the only person that can provide that support or the ability, now you become a caregiver. And so, what does that look like? How do you, how do you, how do you provide that caregiving? How do you make sure that you're taking care of yourself as well? How do you make sure that you're providing the best support to that loved one who may need that support? So, we do have staff that can walk through that process and help to make sure that those things are successful. We have dementia care specialists on staff. Again, as the population is aging, the prevalence of dementia is also increasing. So, we have staff that are versed in dementia and people having a new diagnosis. You know, it can be a scary time. So, having somebody that has an understanding of that, of that disease process and what's going to happen and how to support that, we have those staff on, on staff as available as well. Another program that we offer that you're probably really familiar with, or at least the name of it is our Meals, our Meals Program, our Meals on Wheels Program. And so, we do offer quite a few meals to every nook and cranny of the counties that we serve. So, just a little bit of statistical data that I have. So, we, in 2021, served 51,700 meals to individuals within Wood County, and served also about 4,500 meals to individuals that come into our congregate dining sites. So, we have some dining sites within the county. So, we have it at the Centralia Center here in Wisconsin Rapids, and then have it at a couple of different locations in Marshfield, including the Community Center, and one of the residential facilities that are there as well. So, really, you know, I wanted to come in and provide this update as was required, as part of the intergovernmental agreement. We do have representation from your County Board on our Board. So, Supervisor Fisher and Supervisor Clendenning are currently serving as, as County Board-appointed members of our Board. And then Mike Fire, who was a previous supervisor on this Board, is also a citizen member within our Board as well. So, we have 15 members on our governing Board, eight of which are appointed by the four counties, so two from each county, and then we have seven citizen members that are, that are appointed as well. So, with that, honestly, I would, I told you I would keep it brief. I wanted to keep you guys updated in regards to the supports and services that we provide. Obviously, you can see the ongoing need for the level of services that we do. Our goal is to, you know, help people maintain their independence and health within the situation that they want. Most of the time, that's within their home, helping them to understand how to spend their own personal resources most effectively prior to getting to that publicly funded aspect where, where that's taxpayer-based. So, I would entertain questions if anybody would have any questions.
Are there any questions? You know, this is one of the very successful regional collaborations that we have endeavored. And I actually chaired the formation of the ADRC, and it ended up being a model for the state. And it's something that has been adopted by many, many of the, you know, different consortiums that have been put together to operate this. And we've had a tremendous amount of participation as Chairman of this organization. We've gone forward. Hildy Henkel chaired this for a long time. I believe Doug Mahan chaired it for a while. So, myself, so there's been, you know, we've had a tremendous amount of input in what's occurred. It's been extremely successful in providing services across the region. And one of the things that we look at is more regional collaboration as we move forward, ways to save money. Anybody else have anything? Any questions? None? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the update. Look forward to continuing. All right, we're through the packet. We're through the special order of business. Anything else that needs to come before us? Anything else? Next meeting, Tuesday, October 18th. We're back on schedule, Tuesday, October 18th. I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.